So it's six o'clock on August the 17th. And I'm on call to call to order our regularly scheduled Select Board meeting. First thing is set adjust agenda.
Like to make an adjustment on the agenda. Can I do that?
Yeah, go ahead. Now's the time.
Or not the agenda, sorry, the minutes from last meeting.
No, you can't do that yet.
Adjustment on the agenda is we need to remove item five. And we'll move it to the September 7th meeting because we're just not ready for prime time yet.
Okay. Looking forward to that though when we get to it. Any other changes to the agenda tonight? Could I have a motion to amend the agenda to remove item five?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we have our agenda. Next communication from the audience. We're a little thin on the ground here for the audience. Next, Select Board to approve minutes from the regular Select Board meeting of August the 3rd. And it sounds like Obie had a correction.
I made that correction.
You made that. It's all corrected.
Okay, I just want a correction for the record.
Yes.
The Gazette takes our minutes word for word. The last set of minutes said that we bought six properties in the FEMA buyout. And I checked the minutes and that's what it said. So I just wanted to make sure that we identified six potential properties. So there's, there has been no purchases in that program.
Which we understood.
Right, but it was in the agenda, it was in the Gazette.
We sent a correction to the cat and it fixed the minutes.
Okay.
And you have to track that minutes.
Wait, so these are, this, they're already corrected.
These are correct.
I just want it for the record.
Got it. Right, okay.
We're good.
Any other changes to the, oh, well, that's not a change. That's just a.
So September is written.
Yep. You're moving to exception.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor of approving the minutes as written from last time, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we have approved the minutes from last time. Next up is a Town Manager Report.
Do we have communication from the audience? Oh wait, that's my stat.
Oh, good.
Yeah, sorry. Just figured it out. Okay. So. We had a stormwater system down here in the North Main Street parking lot. We had some damaged, the apparatus in that first manhole was damaged. So it's been removed by the company that installed that. We purchased the stormwater system for the Conservation District. So that repair has been made. And that was likely the contributing cause of the manhole cover popping off. And the washout and the damage to that parking lot.
So I had someone ask me last night if, if we were gonna have to dig that up to repair it. And I said, I thought it was all internal to repairs, right?
The, all, everything that we repaired, we could get to.
Okay, that's what I thought.
They're just confined space entries.
Yep.
And that system, I found out that is the largest. That apparatus is installed and this system is the largest that apparatus has ever seen. So there was some design flaws that they have, they're correcting and paying for.
Okay.
And then we're gonna put that on a FEMA project, the damage.
Yep.
Okay. Just a couple of things for the wastewater. So the state, the state of Vermont is gonna put out bids and enter into contracts with a contractor and with the towns to inspect sewer lines at no cost. So the state is gonna pay to inspect sewer mains, sewer lines, to make sure that nothing was damaged. And that's gonna be a program that they're gonna roll out.
Does that mean camp, sending camera number?
Statewide or?
Statewide, or the, well, no, the.
The flooded.
The affected areas.
Right.
So they can identify any areas that would damage.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, so that's a.
Well, there's a lot of pipes like, you know, one of them was down by the log yard. A lot of towns have them in places where they're not readily seen. They may not be noticed for.
Right.
A year, you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
Or the damage may not be noticed.
And it's also infiltration of groundwater and stormwater too that contributes to the flows at the plants. So I think that's great that they're doing that. And we'll surely sign up for that. I had, last Wednesday, I had a meeting with the USDA about the wastewater facility. A lot of my time lately has been spent on next steps for the wastewater plant. USDA is potentially, nothing is written in stone. And there's, they're, they're still trying to figure. FEMA still has to do their steps. But there's a possibility that the state would enter into a program with USDA to, to get the funds to redo those three plants. So Ludlow, Hardwick, and Johnson. So there's gonna be some information coming down the pipe on that. And we're front and center on it.
Started to bridge it, or was it to fully fund it?
Potentially fully fund it.
Oh, great.
Yep.
So the federal agencies would team up together.
Right, but that's after FEMA's mitigation. I had a fairly positive meeting with the director assigned to this area today about the wastewater plant. So they're very interested in mitigation efforts. Because this plant has been flooded out four times.
In the what, since the 90s?
Yep.
Same with Johnson, right? I believe, I mean, Johnson's been 23, I know.
Johnson's been rebuilt, like Johnson's had an upgrade.
Since, yeah, over the years.
Yeah.
Oh.
And then last week I put out an RFP for a temporary bridge on Fisher Folly. That serves a single residence, but that's our bridge. So we'll likely have a special Select Board meeting to accept those bids once they come in. I haven't received any yet. The deadline is next Wednesday.
It says it'll be done ASAP, yeah.
Yep. And then there's a group of folks that have signed up to assist others with FEMA grants and denial claim. Like, what's the word I'm using, like, to help with denials and stuff like that. So there was a FEMA 101 volunteer class that a bunch of people took. And then they're gonna be in this building on Saturdays from 12 to, from 10 to 12, and on Wednesdays from 5 to 7. So that was put on the website.
Is that just a walk-in thing?
Yep.
Okay.
Walk-in, and we've, we've requested the USDA be there for home repair loan, or home repair grants. So they have some programs. So that's gonna be kind of a, a good thing for the community. So hopefully people utilize that.
Supposed to be in the memorial room?
Yeah, downstairs. So the, there's, there's a website post. And then Neighbor to Neighbor Group is heading it up with some local volunteers. And that should be a real positive thing.
So they'll publicize.
Appeals.
Appeals, yeah, yeah.
So the Neighbor to Neighbor will publicize it too then, I see.
Correct, they have, yep. And so we put it on our website.
Great.
Yep.
Awesome.
That's all I got for now. There's more, but.
So what about cleanup of the river corridor?
Yeah, what do you know?
That people asked me about Wilkes Street. And also the people from the motel are trying to do something with that.
They're working on their own demo plans for that.
They don't have very much luck though.
No, I talked to them this morning.
Oh, did you?
They've got a plan. They were just, they had a contractor and his excavator broke down.
Oh, that's fine.
So they couldn't get it there. But it is starting, it's still, it's listing still.
Well, that's it. It's, that's my perspective. That's like, there's gonna be more of it.
And the river.
The river, if we don't do something.
We're working with the, with the D E C to get, for the river corridor, to get a plan in place for that.
Well, that's what I was just trying to, there is gonna be a state plan for that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's, just wanted to make sure I was telling people right there.
Twenty-six.
We're hoping, yeah, and there's like, there's like a greenup effort.
Yeah.
That, that's gonna be only on public property though.
Only on public property. So, but Tracy's put up, put our, put Hardwick's name in for the, you know, the area beyond the private property. And hopefully be able to coordinate some.
Right, well, I mean, unfortunately, the very I'm talking about, it's gonna take a lot more than an orange bag.
The stuff that's in the river.
In the river, cars.
Yeah, that's gonna have to be.
Up big things.
D E C.
Yeah.
Big things.
There's, there is, I've noticed.
I've been telling, I've just been telling people there, it's going to be a plan.
Yep.
Yeah.
We gotta get, you know, that's nothing.
I've had several phone calls with the state DOC about it.
Yeah.
And everybody knows about that tree that's like jammed behind the, against the bridge behind the laundromat. I just noticed it this morning. There's a tree, but, yeah.
Okay. You mean the North Main Street Bridge?
Uh huh.
Upstream or downstream?
Well, the laundromat, so on the.
Be upstream.
Upstream.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's a look.
Yeah, it's, it looks pretty precarious.
Okay.
I just noticed.
Don't climb it.
On the side of, yeah, like by the, yeah, it's poking up.
Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Next up is Tom Fadden with the Road Foreman Report.
Oh, gee, I just really don't remember what the heck we did last week, so. I'm trying to remember.
So you fixed the sewer line?
I do, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the sewer line stuff was this week. We've been down in Coop Brook for the last two and a half days there repairing that sewer line down to there. That was all its holes. So we had to, we hauled in, I don't know how many yards of stone. Some of them, I think, were bigger than the excavator. But we got that done today, this afternoon.
So that's the, that line that goes from the lift station to Horse Main?
Yeah, it's Horse Main.
It got exposed. I didn't know that.
Yeah, we had, what, maybe 150 feet of bank on, I think. So that's all done, that's all taken care of. So that sewer line is good and protected again. We finished that this week. Grading wise, ain't, ain't, ain't been much going on. Because I was doing a little spot right here and there and some washouts and stuff, trying to, trying to get those fixed. And on Monday, we did get a little bit of asphalt, just tried to patch things up around the village. Like, we're kept washing out down below in the parking lot, so that sealed up good down through there. Cut places on sidewalk here, then the rest just went up on Center Road to get that. I do got more culverts ordered. Hopefully they'll be here tomorrow. Fifty feet is for Center Road. Then I got some on Moore Lane, Tucker Brook. And I think that's it, maybe one section up on Duck Road that we gotta fix. Last week, let's see, we did get Belfry completely done. So bring the culvert up there for the crossing and stuff. Ditch work, everything up there is done already and prepped for getting ready for paving. I did get in contact with EJ Hutchins. So he's good to go. He's gonna come back, get in town, show them, I've got to show them Center Road, West Hill, and Belfry, so we can get a little while he's here. And that was the other thing that we fixed actually, was Center Road there right next to the car garage. So we got that all re-stone right next to the bridge there, the dip. So that thing is all completely done and stuff. And we got, got some stay mat there for now in, in the roadway, so we can dig it out easy enough.
What's the story with that bridge over there? Is that something we gotta wait to have it re-engineered and stuff?
Which one's that?
That one.
Harriet Farms?
Harriet Farms.
Yeah, that's one of the ones that was on our hit list there for the state council.
It's gonna be all.
Like all the study and everything on, yeah. Opening up, I don't know.
Did you, did you get that culvert that's up towards, yeah, you did, okay.
Which one?
By the Kish Farm?
Past issues that, that might.
On Center Road.
Saturday for.
Vacation. Oh, yeah. Well, it's got a layer, it's got a layer of black off across it right now. That's one of the ones that I just said that we gotta get 50 feet for to replace.
Culvert failed there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the old culvert is pretty well rotted and gone right here, so.
That's what happened.
Yeah.
One of those, you just gotta hold your breath when you go over it.
Yeah.
I got a phone call about it on Saturday morning, so.
I guess it wouldn't dump truck didn't bother me, but it went right over it.
Good thing you didn't have a plow on. Good thing you didn't have a plow on.
No, we got the next week.
You cut it down to the worst of them, why not down to Route 14?
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, so that's bad. I mean, next week, we already got a plan.
Last week, we sucked out all of the stormwater systems, including the one down.
Yeah, and we had a, we had a water leak we had to fix. Then we had to go down and sort plan and fix the water line down there and shut off gate bells and stuff. And yeah, I mean, it's just one thing around to another right now.
Yeah.
But next week, our plans are to head for Tucker Brook. We've got a six foot culvert there, we're gonna do up there, plus another 18 inch culvert up there that we're gonna do. And they're gonna fix down through, while they're doing that, you guys are gonna go up if, where the permits, so far it looks good. We're gonna start right there, and we're gonna have a grader going up Smith Farm. And put a new layer of gravel up through that, and then we'll swing over and fix up Tucker, Tucker Brook, and we get that attached. We'll get that done, then we'll come back towards town, then we'll head for Bridgeman. I gotta go up, do Hunter Lane, Reno Road, and Culvert Crossing on Moore Lane. And then a section down through Cobb School.
You'll be busy.
Hopefully.
It'll stop raining.
Right, yeah. He's just stopped raining.
Yeah, so let's plan a tag for trying to get those roads back. Before anything else happens, I gotta get out on Kerry Road. We do got that water main that's exposed over there. I already talked to state about building like a small little copper dam right there, just to try to raise the water level back up. So go through the box culvert to cover that plate back up for winter.
So that's not a place where you wanna get a temporary bridge?
They looked at it.
Yeah, they said it's all reminded and everything. It's just, it's a complete rip out.
And they, their temporary bridge inventory isn't, I mean, that's a, it's not landlocking anybody.
Right, yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate all your, all your efforts.
Yeah, you got to do good, you can bust and bust.
Yeah.
Big thank you to the Community Bank N A. For gifts certificates to all the town employees.
Nice.
To the House of Pizza.
Nice.
Yeah, we really appreciate it, so.
Yeah.
Well, we got 25 of them, not all the town employees.
Wow.
Yeah.
A lot of town employees. All right.
No subcontractors either.
No.
Cookies.
You got cookies. All right, next step is the Hardwick Police Department Report given by Mike Henry.
Mr. Stone, so we got the cruiser that went out for the new engine that got flooded. That went to Twin State. Unfortunately, when we got it back halfway driving it back, we checked engine oil and came on. Got it back here in the office. It was not dried out like it was said to be. So sent it back to them and they're still working on it. That was over a week, you know, the employee, the coil. I asked them, you know, you know, underneath if that's been dried out. Oh, no, we'll pull the mats out now, the flooring, get that dried out. So I think I'm gonna have to put new flooring there, just because I'm concerned about mold and that kind of stuff and having problems. So I told them to take care of that. The insurance will still cover that, I'm not sure, because they made us pay before we took it.
Well, we got the reimbursement for the change.
Right, we already get the reimbursement from insurance, but it's not fixed. That's the problem. So that's the bad news, fear of the dog, start off with that. The, we did a joint training with the Monroe County Active Shooter with school stuff last weekend, and it went really well. Learned a lot from that, just doing live stereos over there. Worked with state police, the Monroe County Sheriff's Department, Moorestown, Woodstall. And we've got a good working group amongst all of us now. We're trying to do the training that way. I'm in contact with the schools here, just completely set up for this school here, so things are going pretty good there. With the, I've been working with Tom too. We're gonna try and get those, I hated to ask Tom for this, but we have those radar signs we need to get put out. So he's ordered the poles for those. We're gonna put down one of those radar signs, the solar ones down on South Main Street, near the cemetery. Reason being, trying to get people to slow down before the school's open.
Yep.
And also we need to have light there. You know, if we go back a little ways, then you get a canopy of trees, and I don't think that's gonna work with the solar. Same thing with, we're gonna put the other one down across your tops. So like eastbound into town on Route 15, that'll be the other solar one. So we'll still keep moving the signs around. We have two portable signs that we'll move around. One right now is up on, it's on Hardwick Street, as you're coming south in, in there where it turns to 25. The other one we have on Spring Street. And then we've got the one that we've been having problems with down on Mill Street. And we're trying to get that one fixed, yeah, because that's not even a year old, we already have problems with it. So just trying to get those radar signs. I think they do make a difference.
I was just gonna ask, do you see them making a difference?
Yeah, I do. I do.
It keeps the, you know, the, people that are paying attention to their driving, when that flashes, they slow down.
Good.
Yeah, it doesn't catch everybody, but.
So I think the other thing, you know, and I know Tom's really busy, but we talked about going out, starting a, you got all the signs now for speed limit signs. We're trying to get those out in, in the places that we, we'd like to, but he's better than busy. So we did order, we got everything in, so we're gonna go.
Great.
I just wanna add too, one of our officers has taken a large amount of check, fraudulent check cashing cases. And he wanted me to say in a public meeting to urge businesses to ask for an ID when cashing a check. Because that's not being done in all places. So I think he's gonna put out a press release too on that. Just being leery of checks.
Checks.
Yeah.
That's why they still use those.
I know. I was surprised too.
The only one missing up are the cruts.
So be leery of.
That's not true. We take checks, that whistle, and they're always good.
Yeah, I know, I'm just kidding.
So far, so good.
Hey.
I feel.
That's all I got.
All right.
It's getting ridiculous now, all you do is wait your credit card by the machine and take some money right out, so.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
I have a Hardwick Electric report on here, but we'll just keep rolling, because we don't have anyone from Hardwick Electric.
Those are up, especially now.
That wasn't, hasn't been the report a lot, no, we have not.
Those days are over.
So first is item one, Select Board to discuss and review the requests from the Hardwick Food Pantry to be added to the coin drop scheduled for October in 2024. That's next year.
We add them to the, it's, that's one of the.
That was the empty slot, yeah.
Another move that we allow them to do that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, so motion carries, that's all of us. Next, item two is to review the updated hazards and mitigation actions for the local hazard mitigation plan update. And we have Paul Luciano, Luciano on the line with us. And he's the consultant who helped us prepare this update. So.
Thank you. I'm coming in clear.
Yeah.
Excellent. So for the updated profile hazards for this plan, they have severe winter and ice storm, flooding, few, few of erosion. And all that comes with that, the end breach, inundation, potential landslides. Extreme temperatures, both hot and cold, and infectious disease, as much as you won't forget. Put that behind us. I think it's important for towns to keep that in, at least for another planning cycle. And we, just at the, just at the point. FEMA really only wants the profile hazards to be natural hazards. So if there's something like the last plan had hazardous materials incident, it's really a vulnerability from town. And so anything that the town wants that's not a natural hazard just gets kind of shifted to a vulnerability. And I don't know if you have the document I sent, there are goals. I'm not gonna read those. They're, I think, seven or eight bullet points. It's essentially, to paraphrase the goal before we get to the action, it's just what you're doing right now for the July floods. You know, across the board for all the profile hazards, but also emphasizing keeping it on the radar. And examples of that are things you're already doing, or towns are already doing it, where you have subrisance section within your town plan. And just incorporating into municipal government standard operating procedures. And that's all, you know, spelled out, spelled out the last plan continues to be spelled out this time as a requirement. And for the actions, I'll go through the, the general headers. And I think, hardly for this, we'll just kind of cruise through the, what we have in there for the July floods. There are specifics associated with each of these actions within the draft plan. I normally don't read those in this meeting. Action one is to reduce vulnerability to flooding by evaluating capabilities of existing road and stormwater management infrastructure, public education, municipal services, and regulations. And we'll bounce back to that one, but I'll just go through the rest. Action two, to improve resilience in severe winter storms, like the ice storms. Action three, reduce impact of extreme hot and cold temperature durations. Quick segue, there's an article specifically in Vermont, and that climate mitigation doesn't really help, help municipalities prepare for the big mac. So I think that's an important distinction, as climate change is really on the radar. But still, there's, there's much to be done, as we all know, to reduce the impact of large flooding events. Number four, raise open limits and hazards and hazard mitigation actions. And that kind of diffuses through all of those. Something Hardwick's doing a fantastic job of with your community partners. And reduce risk in effect of major infectious disease events. And right now for this, a lot of that percolates down, if the town is still utilizing any kind of COVID funds. It's still in the works, even if it's just grant reporting. You know, I think that fits in there nicely. And then going back to number one, for DR 4720, the July floods. It's likely that recovery will stretch into the next planning cycle, which will be five years from the point of FEMA's final approval. And here's what we have, they're very general, and it's all what you're doing right now. Assess the conditions of infrastructure damage and destruction for triage action. Assess and develop strategies to reduce risk of water supply during flood events. Maintain adequate records, grant management to maximize FEMA public assistance for health and construction projects. Probably should change or just add, you know, any funding that's available. I don't know if CDBG, D R will come back into play, but it was during, after our meeting. Helps the town to move their town coverage, so that, that can be a substantial piece. I'm not sure if that's gonna come around again, but there are some other funding available. USDA. Has some influence. Assistant Corporate for Recovery and Fire, that's a business again, something Hardwick's doing a great job with, with your community partners. Collect lessons learned, develop innovative measures to reduce the impact of primary events. Six, create improved degree management response plan, that's coming down from the state right now. Utilize, and the last one, utilize appropriate best practice guidance for the creation implementation of enhanced planning response initiatives. And ACCD has some, a toolkit for that. And also FEMA has some good, well, that's the line of innovation, but FEMA has some good suggestions as well. And I'll, I'll stop there and take any questions? I have to get back to them?
No, we're, we're just hanging on. It's a fast ride.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. I'll just, very briefly, it's a review we submitted in time for the town to maximize its E R A F match rate. And it will come back, we'll do some edits, and we'll send it back. And then you will, you will, once it's approved by the state, you'll make a motion to adopt. Once it's adopted, I add that adoption page to the plan, send it off, you will stamp it, and you're good for another five years. Okay?
Okay.
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 So, so tonight we need to do what?
Tonight, just capture the fact that this meeting happened in the minutes.
Okay.
And I think Casey has already alerted the public that this, this is happening. And that the public has an opportunity to review the draft as your surrounding towns have been notified as part of the requirements. So just capturing this in the minutes.
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks very much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Appreciate it.
It's an amazing document.
Yeah.
A little intimidating.
Yeah, I didn't, I just skimmed so far.
And there's, there's an effort right now. I guess if the damage statewide exceeds like $115 million, our reimbursement rate goes up to 90% through FEMA.
That's good.
That's good.
Yeah.
$115 million doesn't seem like a whole lot these days.
Considering that Barry and Montpelier.
Oh, but private, yeah, Barry and Montpelier. Man, I'm telling you, they don't think that Barry, I was in there yesterday, it's a sad. Man, I'm telling you, they're all tied to Barry, I was in there yesterday, it's a sad place still.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is bad.
So, that's likely to happen.
Um, X, it's awesome that, um, Paul was able to get that data for us.
And the funds for his consulting came from the RPC.
Oh, good.
From the what?
The Regional Planning Commission.
NBDA.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so I'm gonna move us on to item three, select board to review and consider approving interim zoning bylaws due to the flooding.
They're in the pack.
Yes.
So, is interim, does that mean, interim mean that they're going to be there forever, or?
No.
So why is that temporary?
They're temporary because they would only run for a year, and the idea is to, to do a test run, almost, to see how they work, to implement them in the future in the normal bylaws as a trigger event. So if a federal disaster declaration is made, these are the rules that will be coming to life. They're not to, they're not to supplement the, the rules that are normally in play, but rather to look at the fact that we're talking about people who have mold and are not able to live in their homes, et cetera, so we're trying to streamline the process.
Streamline a fast track.
But it will eventually have a trigger, which, I'll be incurred this time.
At this time, it already cleared, an interim bylaw technically is not supposed to live forever, it has an end date in this, of one year. Um, and the end, you, it's, it allows you to see how it works, basically.
Good.
This has not been vetted by the, um, attorney yet, uh, the state's attorney also had not finished vetting. One of the concerns of the state's attorney, the attorney for the state, was that there's no definitions. I cross-checked this entire thing, all of these definitions are in our bylaw, and this becomes part of our bylaw.
So.
I would.
Doesn't need its own, then.
Huh?
Doesn't need its own definition section, then.
Does not need its own definition, I mean, their concern is that there are towns that do not have the same level of bylaws, and we redid our flood bylaws just like five years ago, so ours is not in dire need. Um, I don't know what you guys want to do, if you wanna have a special meeting after the town even reviews it, or if you wanna make a motion to approve it based on, on contingent upon.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve it based on the, uh, the attorney's. Be done with it.
Second.
Any more discussion? I thought it seemed pretty straightforward, so.
It's important, and I will point out that this is, uh, taking people to a higher level than we currently require. We are currently at, at base flood elevation or above, this requires you to be at two feet above.
Yeah.
So you're already, and it's, it's going to the state as well. So it's not, it's not as though they're just allowed to do whatever they want to do.
Right.
The one that I have that, that would fall into this category, they, they took a surveyor to come out, their packet has gone to the state, they're waiting for the state's response.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion to approve pending attorney sign off, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Um, next is item four, select board to authorize waiving zoning permit fees for floodplain properties for the next hundred and eighty days.
That actually should be zoning and other, uh, because it's recording fees that are actually what are.
What have skill.
Well, huh?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Right now, I don't actually charge for two or three of these permits at all, it's a recording fee I'm taking in, and I'm, I'm, I'm keeping track of which ones have already come in without the recording fee, and I'm looking entirely on that. But if we're, if we're asking people to return these, asking for them to return without any monetary is, is a lot easier.
It's more important.
I have seventy of these that I.
It's more part, wow, part.
Yeah, if you go down and look at my desk, it looks like the blue folder file, factory blew up. And I'm at, like, six or seven have come back, but I.
Because we're, we basically want and need these to be returned.
We need these to be returned, because the other, um, problem would be if we don't have them returned, um, FEMA will be coming in a year or so, and if they do not have, if I do not have these, we get kicked out.
So the reason that we ask for fees generally is because of your time, you know, the administrative time it takes for them, so if you're good with it, I'm good with it.
Well, you know, actually, it does cover costs, there are some that will, where we will be putting out monetary, like, having a hearing, we have to post it in the newspaper, et cetera, it's not just my time, um.
It covers our cost generally.
I think it's something that we can, um, request to be compensed from FEMA for permitting, part of permitting. I mean, we're, we're, unless you.
Well, I, I think it's a good idea, because we want people to.
How, how would you edit this statement, Kristin?
Zoning and recording fees.
Zoning and recording fees. So.
So moved.
So, so any moves that we authorize waiving the zoning and recording permit fees for, or fees for floodplain properties for the next hundred and eighty days retroactive to the flooding event?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
Second.
Good job.
All right, um, so any more discussion about waiving those fees, we need to encourage people to record all that stuff, so. All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you again.
I went back to my.
Lair.
Explosion of.
All right. Thank you.
You don't need to be for anything else, right?
We always need you.
Item six, a select board to authorize town manager and town clerk to act on behalf of the town in matters relating to its loan from the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank's twenty twenty-three Series Two bonds, of which we had two, the library and the gravel pit.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 I have one, um, so.
Any opposed?
I need you to sign that document, and then the bylaw, the adoption of the interim bylaws, I need all of your signatures, please, if we could just take a moment.
Yep.
Start on.
Yep.
Do you have an assignment?
Uh, it's Eric, signs that one, chair, the bond bank one, and if you can, one out.
Um. All right, that's coming back, so next, another authorization, um.
Did you vote on that?
We did.
We did.
You did, okay.
Everyone said aye.
Aye.
And nobody said nay, and the motion carried.
For the age.
Huh? Um.
Yeah, let's do it, item.
Item seven, right?
Eight.
Six, really.
Yeah, item seven, which was item eight.
Oh, sorry, I'm just reading.
No, they missed two, only by one, you're right. We haven't done the item seven, that should be item six, or whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item, select board to authorize the town manager to be the town's voting delegate for VLCT passive and verb, that's.
So moved, don't involve anything.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
What does verb stand for?
Oh, verb.
Very easily retired.
Non-employee resource benefits.
There you go.
Great, unemployment, basically.
Oh, man.
The Vermont League of Cities and Towns, property casualty fund.
Yeah.
I've actually never heard of that one.
Vermont Energy Resource Board.
What is that?
Just pull that.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor of authorizing the town manager to be the town's voting delegate to the VLCT stuff, please, um, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, next is select board to consider providing a letter of support for Jasper Hill Farm for a grant application for their food venture center location, letter to be done by the town manager, uh, for the, in support of the grant.
What grant application to what?
It was in our, um, folder.
I didn't see it.
And it's, uh, it's a twenty-five page grant application to the Vermont Dairy Business Innovation Council, and basically what it says is that, so I did spend way too long reading it, because it was long. Um, but basically, it says they're asking for money, they are, so they're, they're shifting things around a little bit, they wanna be able to make more soft cheese, so they're gonna move some current activities out of the food venture center, like their cold storage, that's gonna move to the yellow barn.
Right.
They're renovating their area at the food venture center, adding a couple silos that sounded like they're outdoors, and, uh, they're gonna be able to make more cheese in there, but they're asking for money to do that.
It's all good.
More cheese production there?
More cheese production.
So they can pay farmers.
And they're gonna.
Premium for their. For their milk.
Yep.
Instead of having it be paid on.
Which they currently do, but they'll be able, they'll be buying more milk.
They'll use more.
Yep, they'll be buying more milk.
Yeah.
I, so I don't have a problem with it, but we did have the discussion about, you know, making sure we knew what we were writing for, letters for, so as long as we're comfortable. I'm not reading twenty-five page application.
Well, I read it and I was comfortable.
Yeah, then that, then that's fine.
We supported another, this, we supported like another grant to this program that piggybacks off of. The, this other grant was the initial grant, and then this piggybacks off of that one.
Yeah, and part of the reason for our policy is so that we know.
We know.
That we're not, you know, that we're, they're not having conflicting.
Why would we not have another grant person write this letter?
It's not, oh, the letter.
The letter not.
All right, oh, I don't know.
Well, I move that we provide a letter of support.
We wrote, you moved that we provide the letter, the town provides a letter of support for this grant. Do we have second to that?
Second.
Yep.
Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, select board reports.
Tonight's the last concert of the chamber players for the season.
Can we still make it?
Yes. It starts at seven thirty.
You can still make it.
Should possibly make it, um.
You could hope suffering make it.
Amazing.
Yeah, and then another, uh, townhouse thing, so Kaylee and Jeff have offered to give us a apple tree that will replace the one that died, um, and the board last night voted to, uh, accept that gift, but it's, it's in the yard, so it's town property, so I just wanna get official AOK.
Sounds good, should we go in front or back?
In the front.
Yep.
Where the, where the dead one is right now.
Right, where the dead one is right now.
Where is that, by the driveway or on the other side, in the front?
I'd suffer the same.
Toward the neighbors of this.
Oh, okay.
They.
We moved it, it was.
Relaxed.
We moved it, it was remarkably, it had survived, and it was.
A move.
It had gotten planted next to the old sign, and it was, yeah, so when we did our new sign and everything, we moved it, and it didn't, it survived one year and didn't make it through the next, so.
All right, that's good.
It'd be nice to have a tree there. Go for it.
Um, I will report that there is a official groundbreaking ceremony for the yellow barn tomorrow, eleven AM.
Oh, that's a good idea.
In the pouring rain.
Perfect. Well, that'd be toxic waste there.
It's going inside the yellow barn.
Yeah, there you go.
I know, that's what I thought too, but.
It is looking good, though, the concrete, I don't know, I heard a lot of people that really, um, tomorrow. Are, are not nearly as, I don't wanna say against it, yeah, they're, they seem to be getting a little bit of enthusiasm, seeing it.
Happy.
In the air, square, the concrete going under, so.
Their skepticism has diminished.
There you go, very good job, it's, they were not, you know, but we gotta keep it moving, so.
We, yes.
Air is working tighter, is it, tighter, I.
Tiredly.
Yes.
Tirelessly.
Tire.
Tiredly. All right.
Eleven o'clock tomorrow.
Eleven o'clock tomorrow is a groundbreaking ceremony.
Patrick Leahy and some other.
Patrick Leahy, um, yeah, and folks from representing others, yep, so.
Everybody else, correct?
Yep. Yep.
Great news.
A lot of them deserve it.
Guess I should show up.
Yeah. All right, and it's gonna be wet, so bring an umbrella if you're coming.
It's gonna be wet again, God.
Or still.
Yes.
All right, uh, any old business, new business or old business?
Uh, we had a little bit of success with, um, uh, communicating to the downtown businesses that it would be helpful if their staff and employees didn't park on, actually on the strip of Main Street, that they like move to further out, so that we leave that more for customers. Um, and it was, uh, it seems like it's helped.
Yeah, I think it's, you guys did a great job, I was very happy to see those exchange of emails.
But I think, um, we'll, we're gonna keep working on whether or not, how many, um, handicap spots we actually need to have. Wanted, I wanted to set up a time and talk with, it'll be in.
I mean, tonight, they are down this.
Can I do this?
When we did the place on, it's close to.
Yeah, last night was the same.
It's the Corksport.
Yeah.
It's still back, so.
So it's great. Yeah, and people, I average.
Very good, see them open back, I think.
And that two-hour window works out pretty well for the, for the restaurants, so, yeah, but I think we need some more signs, you know? I think there's only like one that.
So did, yeah.
That says two-hour parking.
Yeah, so.
But we're working on it.
Yeah, communication with folks down there is great.
Well, I'm happy, I'm glad you guys are able to communicate with each other about the problems and done, just as someone could be outside, which you might be.
Right.
That does, that's my effect.
Right.
All right. Um, could someone make a motion to go?
Executive session?
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to one VSA three thirteen for personnel matter to include town manager and police chief.
So, a second?
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so we're gonna go to executive session, and we're going to your office?